Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the city of Muskegon City Commission meeting from March 11th, 2014. Before we proceed, I'd like to call forward Pastor Marcy Miller from Samuel Lutheran Church to lead us in prayer, and that will be followed by the pledge of allegiance. If anyone is wearing hats, caps, or anything, gentlemen, could you please remove those? Pastor?
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, we give thanks for those gathered here to carry out the work of this community. We pray for protection for police and fire workers. We pray for peace in our homes, in our city, in our world. And we ask that the work carried out here this evening may be done with fairness and with justice. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. May we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Galrin?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Rinsemasipika?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Everybody's here? Well, before we get into the meat of the evening, we have some honors and awards. I'd like to call forward Katie Santee. Ms. Santee is with the West Michigan Trails and Greenways Coalition, and she's here tonight to be recognized on behalf of her organization by us, our organization, for some very generous outreach to the city. This is a recognition for the West Michigan Trails and Greenways Coalition's support of the Muskatawa Trail. Whereas West Michigan Trails and Greenways Coalition began as a small grassroots core group of individuals dedicated to addressing the needs of the regional trails network, and whereas West Michigan Trails and Greenways Coalition is committed to developing a non-motorized linked trail system that serves community to community while preserving and protecting habitats and natural areas and providing alternative transportation options so citizens may enjoy the many parks, historical landmarks, and cultural sites that Michigan has to offer. And whereas West Michigan Trails and Greenway Coalition recognized the beauty of Muskegon and the benefits for a connector project linking the non-motorized Muskatawa Trail to the Laketon Trail in the city of Muskegon, and supported this project by issuing a grant in the amount of $50,000. Now I, Mayor Stephen J. Galrin, thank the Board of West Michigan Trails and Greenways Coalition on behalf of myself, the City Commission, and the citizens of this fine community for the generous donation of $50,000 given by this organization who support the Muskatawa Trail and recognize the potential Muskegon has as a West Michigan leader. Thank you very much, Katie.
We were very proud and excited to be-
Just a minute.
Thank you. We were very proud and excited to be a part of this project, and I think I can speak on behalf of everyone in West Michigan. We're anxious for the snow to melt so that we can be out and actually enjoying the trails. So, thank you all very much for having me this evening.
Thank you. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request. To approve minutes of the February 7th goal-setting meeting, February 10th commission work session meeting, and the February 11th city commission meeting. Staff recommendation: approval of the minutes. Gaming license requests from the Michigan Irish American Society. City Clerk, summary request. The Muskegon Irish American Society is requesting a resolution recognizing them as a nonprofit organization operating in the city for the purpose of obtaining a gaming license. They have been recognized as a 501(c)(3) organization by the state. Staff recommendation: approval. Consideration of bids for Palmer reconstruction between McGrath and Southern Engineering, summary request. Award the reconstruction of Palmer from McGrath to Southern Avenue contract to Jackson Murkey out of Muskegon Township, Michigan, since they were the lowest responsible bidder with a total bid price of $263,753. Staff recommendation: award the contract to Jackson Murkey. 2014 pavement marking program, Public Works, summary request. Staff is requesting permission to enter into a one-year contractual agreement with Michigan Pavement Marking of Wyoming, Michigan for centerline painting. This contract bid was awarded by the Muskegon County Road Commission and for local agencies in the Muskegon County Pavement Marking Group to enter into with MPM with each member billed separately by MPM for painting services requested. Staff recommendation: approve the request to enter into a one-year contract with Michigan Pavement Markings. Management agreement, Fisherman's Landing Finance Department, summary request. Approval of a proposed agreement of management of Fisherman's Landing for the 2014 season. Staff has met with Fisherman's Landing representatives on several occasions to work out details of the agreement. Key provisions of the new agreement: facility to move more towards self-sufficiency and further relieve city of financial obligations. A non-disparagement clause was added. The agreement terminates at the end of 2014 season, but no later than November 13th of 2014. Staff believes Fisherman's Landing Incorporated is in the best position to manage the facility and continue to oversee its operation. Staff recommendation: approval. Fireworks delegation of authority authorization, public safety, summary request. The Director of Public Safety requests that the City Commission review and authorize the fireworks delegation of authority authorization pursuant to Public Act 256. The Bureau of Fire Safety is seeking for departments that are interested in applying for inspection services delegation for consumer fireworks sales facilities under Section 19 of 2011 PA 256. The delegation is for one year. The fire department would be responsible to conduct inspections of the permanent and temporary CFRS location within its jurisdiction. Entity's MUFD temporary CFRS location within its jurisdiction, city of Muskegon. Entitles: Entities MUFD that elect to have delegation will receive 80% of the application fee paid for the consumer fireworks certification, $700 for permanent and $420 for temporary. Currently, MUFD has two trained certified fire inspectors that are qualified to perform this job task. Application will be made upon the acceptance by City Commission. Staff recommendation: Staff recommends reapproving and performing delegation inspections. River barges to Muskegon Ports, letter of support, planning economic development, summary request. Legislation has been introduced to allow river barge traffic to enter into Muskegon Port. Currently, similar river barge traffic has access to the Wisconsin Ports, but not West Michigan Ports. If river barge traffic is allowed to enter the Muskegon Ports, a drastic increase in export and import will be available to the Muskegon area, including the shipment of goods such as aggregate and alternative energy products into Muskegon and the shipment of agricultural goods out of Muskegon. Staff recommendation: To approve the letter of support for Coast Guard proposal, rulemaking directed by the Director of Governmental and Public Affairs, U.S. Coast Guard Headquarters, and to authorize the mayor's signature. 2014, 2015, and 2016 street sweeping contract, Public Works, summary request. To award a three-year contract to provide four annual street sweepings to Tri-U.S. Services Incorporated out of Kent City, Michigan. Staff recommendation: Approval of this request. City MDOT agreement for the reconstruction of ramp connecting Apple Avenue to northbound U.S. 31 Engineering, summary request. Approve the contract with MDOT for the reconstruction of the on-ramp from Apple to northbound U.S. 31, and approve the resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract. Staff recommendation: Approve the contract and resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign both. Water main purchase and installation, Public Works, summary request. Authorize staff to purchase eight-inch water main pipe and a portentance from Michigan Pipe and Valve to install a new eight-inch water main to the Harris Development at 1601 Beach Street. The developer will pay for all the materials, and the city of Muskegon Water Main Department will install the water main using our in-house workforce and equipment. Staff recommendation: Approve water main material purchases from Michigan Pipe and Valve for the estimated amount of $27,428. Participation agreement for NIMs Neighborhood Playground Planning Economic Development, summary request. Staff has been working with NIMs Neighborhood and Muskegon Public Schools to designate a parcel of property on the former NIMs school site for a playground for the neighborhood. When the school closed a few years ago, the play equipment was removed. There are no other playgrounds in close proximity to much of the neighborhood. Therefore, MPS has agreed to donate a parcel of property to the city of Muskegon, who will then enter into an agreement with the neighborhood to construct and maintain a playground on the property. At this time, it is not absolutely certain where the playground will be located on the property. Therefore, the participation agreement has been prepared and approved and signed by the MPS, which will allow the neighborhood and have an assurance of property control for the future playground needed for grant applications. Staff recommendation: To approve the participation agreement and authorize the vice mayor's signature. Pilot request, Nelson Place Ordinance Amendment, Second Reading, Planning Economic Development, summary request. Joel Hollander of Hollander Development Corporation, a partner in Nelson Place Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership, is seeking new financing for Nelson Place. There is currently a payment in lieu of taxes pilot for Nelson Place, which was executed on March 26th of 1996. Mr. Hollander intends to refinance the existing high-interest loan from Mischa with a lower interest rate loan from another lender. However, the existing pilot ordinance for Nelson Place terminates the exemption upon refinancing. Therefore, an amendment to the current ordinance is being requested to allow for the continuation of the pilot after refinancing. Mr. Hollander intends to continue with the present rent restrictions and income limits with no dislocation of existing tenants. There will be no significant change to the existing pilot length of contract pilot payment. In addition, Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association will be paid back for a portion of their initial investment in the property. The Commission will review and vote on the ordinance amendment at the March 10th, 2014 work session. It is likely that a second reading will be necessary on March 11th, 2014. Staff recommendation: If the City Commission agrees that the continuation of the pilot is necessary for this property, staff recommends that the ordinance amendment be approved and the clerk be authorized to sign the necessary documents. Pilot request, Nelson Place Contract Amendment, Planning Economic Development, summary request. The pilot contract between Nelson Place Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership Nelson Place and the city of Muskegon City was executed on March 26th, 1996. Nelson Place is in the process of refinancing their mortgage. To do so, they must have the contract amended. The length of the pilot, as well as the pilot payment, remain the same. Staff recommendation: To approve the amended contract and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. Resolution to place an emergency moratorium on the establishment of medical marijuana facilities, City Clerk, summary request. To adopt the resolution placing an emergency moratorium on the establishment of medical marijuana facilities for the next 120 days, allowing staff to update the current ordinance based on recent court rulings. Staff recommendation: To authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution. Appointment to Civil Service Commission, City Clerk, summary request. Appoint Pamela Link to the Civil Service Commission. Staff recommendation: Appointment of Pamela Link. Committee recommendation: The Community Relations Committee recommended the appointment at their March 10th meeting.
Is that all? Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner Rinsemasipika?
I'd like to remove item K, participation agreement for NIMs Neighborhood Playground.
Thank you. Any other items?
Items L and M, pilot request.
And L and M? Any others? If not, Vice Mayor?
Seeing none, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read with the exceptions of items K, L, and M.
Thank you. It has been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Hood, to accept the consent agenda as presented minus items K, L, and M. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsemasipika?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And Kate, please, Commissioner?
Yes, I'd like to move that we approve the participation agreement for NIMs Neighborhood Playground.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Rinsemasipika, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to approve the participation agreement for the NIMs Neighborhood Playground. Discussion? Yes. I had this item removed in order to be able to disclose that myself, and I might as well disclose for Commissioner Johnson, that we are both sitting board members on the NIMs Neighborhood Association. After consulting with corporate counsel, there should be or there is no conflict as there would not be any gain for either one of us. As a matter of fact, we'll probably be burning gas money mowing the new playground and upkeeping it, but I wanted to make sure that was disclosed to the Commission. Any other comments or statements? Vice Mayor?
Just one, that, you know, we've heard in recent meetings about the need for green space, and this is a neighborhood, NIMs Neighborhood, that their recreation space was the schoolyard and its playground, and that's not there anymore. And it's almost the only neighborhood without, you know, granted, they touch on Heritage Landing, they have a bit of the Lake Shore Trail that goes along the edge, but as a place for the kids to go where it's safe for parents to take them and they can play and run around, and they don't have that. And so, like some of our other neighborhoods, they are working on creating a safe place for their kids to play, and I think it's important for us to partner with them so that can happen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsemasipika?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item L, Commissioner Johnson?
You took it off. Make a motion. Yes, I took it off to provide an opportunity for fellow commissioners.
Got to make a motion.
Oh, make a motion. Oh, I moved to approve-
Second.
Item L and, or item M and, L and M, pilot request.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner German, to approve item, we have to do these separately.
We can do it separately.
Can we? Items L, N, M. The L, ordinance amendment, second reading for the pilot request for Nelson Place, and item M, the contract amendment for the pilot request for Nelson Place. Commissioner?
Thank you. Yes, I just need to disclose that I am an officer of the Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association. That association does stand to receive a substantial lump sum payment if this process is completed, and therefore, I feel I have a conflict of interest and would ask to be excused from the debate and vote on this.
Commissioner?
I'd like to add that, like Commissioner Spataro, I'm an officer of the Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association, and so I would like to be excused from this item due to conflict as well.
And in this instance, you are looking at obtaining some funds, so if you want to donate anything to the NIMs Playground, feel free to. But anyway.
Share it.
Thank you. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Public hearings, recommendation for annual renewal of liquor licenses.
Summary request: To adopt a resolution recommending non-renewal of those liquor license establishments who are in violation of Section 50-146 and 50-147 of the Code of ordinances for the city of Muskegon. These establishments have been found to be in noncompliance with city code of ordinances, and renewal of their liquor licenses should not be recommended by the city commission. If any of these establishments come into compliance by March 21st, 2014, they will be removed from this resolution, and recommendation for the renewal will be forwarded to the Liquor Control Commission. Staff recommendation: Adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. Are there any staff reports at this time? Good evening, Mr. Grant.
Hello, how you doing?
Good, thank you.
I just wanted to kind of give you overview of the ones that owe either money to the Treasurers or Income Tax Department. Lake Shore Tavern came in earlier today. It looks like she is trying to get the paperwork necessary to be compliant, but I don't know when, so she was trying to get back today by 5:00. So hopefully that will, I don't know, that will be resolved in a couple of weeks or not. The other one, Dreamers, they owe delinquent personal taxes, personal property taxes to the city of Muskegon, totaling $704.33, and also they owe at least, I did a printout from the county, this is not totally accurate, they owe at least $5,000, about $5,800 to the county. Potentially with the 2011, if it's not paid by the end of the month, it could be, go back as a tax sale. So, that's with that one. I have not heard anything from Dreamers. I've been working with the business owner, Old Clover Bar, and it's, I did a report, they owe delinquent personal property taxes for the city of almost $275. The water bill is about $400 to link, and I'm not too much worried about those two things. The thing that I'm most concerned about is that they owe about, almost close to $12,000 in delinquent taxes to the county. The owner wasn't sure if the taxes are going to be paid or not, so I'm not sure what, I mean, it's a lot of uncertainty with that business, so I don't, I mean, it's just, it was a letter that the owner, I don't know if you have it in front of you-
Yes, we have it before us.
Yeah, she did not want to speak, but there's a lot of uncertainty there, I don't know, I told her, "It's up to you guys to decide," but it does not look good from our end, it's like it's, it could be out of business.
The most severe cases are those with substantial amounts left owing to the county-
Yep, and the 2011 is due the end of this month, and that's almost $5,000.
And those are issues that would need to be negotiated with the county treasurer as opposed to us?
Yes.
Okay.
And what I was told by the business owner, she doesn't plan on paying it, maybe the mortgage company will pay it, but there's a lot of mayes there, maybes, I don't know. So, so that's, I recommend that those are not, you know, denied their liquor license until we get some other compliance.
And any of these individuals not currently in compliance have until March 21st. I spoke with the clerk's office, and we have a few days more wiggle room there as of the 28th-
Yes.
-of March before the submittal to the-
That would be the absolute last-
Absolute last date before these are submitted to Lansing.
Any other questions for me?
Any questions on these for Mr. Grant? Vice Mayor?
Just so as I'm clear for, since this came up, and I don't see that gentleman in the audience tonight, apparently none of these bars are on the beach. Just to be clear, the individuals who owe the back taxes, they would have to bring in something from the county treasurer's office indicating that they had worked out an acceptable arrangement between themselves and the county treasurer.
That's what we normally accept. We want something in writing from the, this county treasurer that they entered to some type of agreement, so we'll not get foreclosed on or for tax sale.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Are there any members of the public that'd like to speak to this issue? If not, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we close the public hearing and adopt a resolution recommending the non-renewal of those liquor license establishments who are in violation of Sections 50-146 and 50-147 of the Code of Ordnances for the city of Muskegon.
Second.
It has been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Hood, to close the public hearing and to adopt a resolution recommending non-renewal of those liquor license establishments who are in violation of Sections 50-146 and 50-147 of the Code of Ordnances for the city of Muskegon. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsemasipika?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. May we have unfinished business, please?
To forward case of 1780 Jarman back to the Housing Board of Appeals for oversight of the rehabilitation of the property, public safety, summary request. This is to request that the City Commission consider forwarding the case back to the Housing Board of Appeals to monitor progress in repairs to the structure located at 1780 Jarman Street. Owner Linda Jones and/or representatives have been in contact with Safe Built Building officials, staff to rehabilitate the home. Safe Built Building official Kirk Briggs reports that Ms. Jones has applied for applicable building permits and submitted a rough timeline, which will be considered and presented to the HBA upon approval. Staff recommendation: To forward the case back to the HBA for oversight, repairs, rehabilitation, and timeline monitoring, and not to approve demolition of the property known as 1780 Jarman Street.
I move to forward case number EN 130182 back to HBA for oversight, and not to approve demolition of the property at 1780 Jarman Street.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner German, to forward case EN 130182 back to the HBA for oversight for repairs, rehabilitation, and timeline monitoring, and not to approve demolition of the property known as 1780 Jarman Street. Vice Mayor?
Just one comment. This case ended up before us because this person failed to appear at the Housing Board of Appeals. I just want to urge anybody who owns property in the city of Muskegon that may have some repair issues, that they go through the Housing Board of Appeals process. We do not want to be tearing down people's property. We want to work with responsible property owners to make sure that their buildings are safe and in good use, and if you go to the Housing Board of Appeals, they will work with people who are making the good faith effort. When it comes to us, we have to go on the recommendation of that body, and we're going to, we're going to vote, nine times out of 10, to demolish that property. So, please, do not ignore the Housing Board of Appeals. It's important that you follow that process, so you can get your property up to code, safe to use, and back into generating income or being a safe home for you as the property owner.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Mayor? Any staff report or input at this time, Chief?
None at this time, except Linda Jones did appear today in case that was needed, so I'd like to do that. And please work with Hope Mitchell and Kirk Briggs from Safe Built.
And good luck. Any other comments? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Rinsemasipika?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, please?
Approval of sale of city-owned home at 218 Catherine, Community Neighborhood Services, summary request: To approve the resolution and instruct the Community Neighborhood Services Department to complete the sales transaction between Brooks Jr. and Quintina Dawson for the totally rehabilitated home at 218 Catherine, which is part of the city's Home Infill Program through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Mr. and Mrs. Dawson's purchase price is $49,900. Staff recommendation: To approve the resolution and direct the CNS staff to complete the sale.
Can I get a motion? Commissioner German?
I move to approve the resolution and direct the CNF staff to complete the sale.
Can I get a motion? Commissioner German?
I move to approve the resolution and direct the CNS staff to complete the sale.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to approve the resolution and direct the CNS staff to complete the sale at 218 Catherine. Good evenings, ladies.
Good evening. I know, I'm so happy to be here. Hello, everybody's, everybody's almost asleep.
We're moving some property here.
We are moving properties. We sold four properties, or I should say, we received four offers in one day. We had four properties for sale, and all four properties went in one day, and I have to say that that has to be because of our Realtor who is here tonight, and her name is Kay Pittman, and she is with Green Ridge Realty, and I just wanted to stand, and if you guys could just help me applaud her for, it's never happened before. It has never happened before, and of course she had to have buyers who were qualified, and this particular purchase was a part of our lease to own properties, and so we do have that buyer not here, but her mom is here.
Oh.
I know, she's like, ah, don't tell anybody, but I am so glad that her mother was able to make it, and if you would just stand on behalf of your daughter Quintina, and she is so excited to purchase this home at 218 Catherine, and we should complete the sale in April, so.
Very good, very good. Well, thank you, Kay, and on behalf of the commission, please congratulate your daughter for us, and we hope she has very many happy years in the neighborhood, and I'm sure she'll be a great addition and help it flower. If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizsa Basipiga?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Sorry.
You want some?
Yeah, I think I'm good.
Item B, please.
Approval of sale of city-owned home at 553 Octavius, Community Neighborhood Services, summary request, to approve the resolution and instruct the Community Neighborhood Services Department to complete the sales transaction between Mr. Robert G. Parker for the totally rehabilitated home at 553 Octavius Street, which is part of the city's Home Infill Program through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Mr. Parker's purchase price is $63,000. Staff recommendation to approve the resolution and direct the CNS staff to complete the sale.
Thank you. Motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution and direct CNS staff to complete the sale of 553 Octavius.
Second.
Who wants it?
It has been moved by Commissioner Rizsa Basipiga, seconded by Commissioner Hood, to approve the resolution and direct the CNS staff to complete the sale at 553 Octavius.
And Mr. Parker is here, so I would like for him to stand as well. And Mr. Parker is a veteran, so this is our first VA loan that we have had in the last 15 years, so I'd like to just applaud him, he's a veteran, so.
Well, many happy returns to you as well, sir, and of course, thank you for your service. And as soon as you announce the potluck, I'll make sure I bring something really good. My wife will make it, so it'll be really good, so. Any comments from the commission? Matt, roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizsa Basipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item C, please.
Approval of sale of city-owned home at 1733 Manns, Community Neighborhood Services, summary request, to approve the resolution and instruct the Community Neighborhood Services Department to complete the sales transaction between Ariana Stewart for the newly rehabbed home at 1733 Manns Street, which is part of the city's Neighborhood Stabilization Program through the Michigan State Housing Development Authority Office of Community Development. Ms. Stewart's purchase price is $40,000. Staff recommendation to approve the resolution and direct the CNS staff to complete the sale.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we approve the resolution and direct CNS staff to complete the sale for 1733 Manns.
All right, and this young woman is here tonight. She was scheduled to work, and she took a half-day so that she could meet you, and you could meet her, and Ariana, would you stand, please?
So, as well to you, best of luck, and meet my mom, she's with the Marsh Neighborhood Association here in the border of that, and get involved and bring great things to that neighborhood, I'm sure you will, and best luck, beautiful house. Those are my old stoppages. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizsa Basipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Anita, and thank you, everybody. Kay, thank you. Your honor, pleasure to see you. And that, that must mean everything's legal because you're sitting next to the honor, so. And again, to all of you, many happy years, you know, bless you all. Item D.
Sidewalk snow removal ordinance amendment revised, planning. Summary request, the City of Muskegon currently has a snow removal ordinance for sidewalks, however it is not practical to administer. Therefore, an amendment to the ordinance is recommended to allow for actual enforcement of the ordinance. The major changes are to require snow to be removed from sidewalks within 24 hours after the cessation of any storm depositing snow on the sidewalk, and to allow for employees other than police officers authorized by the city manager to enforce the provisions of the ordinance. In addition, since the February 11th commission meeting, the draft ordinance has been amended to read, "Within 24 hours after the cessation of any storm depositing snow on the sidewalk abutting the property, or as soon as practical, clear the snow from the sidewalk." This allows for discretion depending on the weather conditions. Staff recommendation to approve the ordinance amendment for removal of snow and ice from sidewalks and authorize a clerk's signature.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion. To approve the ordinance amendment for the removal of the snow and ice from the sidewalk and authorize the clerk's signature.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by Commissioner Hood, to approve the ordinance amendment for removal of snow and ice from sidewalks and authorize the clerk's signature. Discussion, comments? Vice Mayor?
Well, I'll just say this, I've been getting communication from constituents on both sides of this issue. I have folks who regularly are frustrated every winter with some of their neighbors not being particularly good neighbors in this regard, but I have other folks who are, you know, what am I supposed to do? I'm a snowbird, we go down to Florida for a couple of months, and now am I going to be gigged, and my house isn't on a route to school or anything like that? And I, and I do think that we just have to be mindful that there's a lot of gray area on this issue, and we need to have some flexibility, and that I will be listening very closely to my constituents, and as this is implemented this coming winter, assuming this one ever ends, that I think we need to be prepared to reopen this and revisit this so that it's fair to the people who live here, and that we're not creating unnecessary hardships for people, particularly those who have vacant lots or vacant houses next door, and, you know, that property's not being held accountable, but they as a responsible homeowner are. Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo those concerns. I, again, have heard comments on both sides, and I think it come, I think that we're, the goal is to make the ordinance practical to enforce, which apparently was the problem before, I think this is a step in that direction. Where it's going to take us, I think, is all, comes down to exactly how that enforcement is going to play out, and I think that that's a careful issue to, to look at as, as we start to do that and think about that. At least we'll be, it will be practical at this point.
Also, I, I think about the disadvantaged people that has disabilities and the elderly also, who has a responsibility if this passes, that creates a problem for them where they may not be able to have their snow removed at that certain time. Also, it doesn't indicate how much snow, I think if it had some language in there also, maybe if there was maybe a half-foot of snow, or, I mean, what do you call, you know, how much is, you know, enough snow to remove? If it's three inches, you know, maybe it may melt at a certain time, if not, it just keeps adding, so I think there's some gray areas in this, so maybe we need to just, like Larry said, revisit it at a certain time.
Okay. Any others? I was thinking about taking a play from Camelot and setting a legal limit to the snow there, but I don't know if that's doable. If that's all, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizsa Basipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Any other business from the commission? Vice Mayor?
Just one, I had a pretty bad head cold, and I'm in a little better shape today, and I was remiss in not thanking Commissioner Rizsa Basipiga and Commissioner Hood for their extra service in interviewing the civil service candidates, and I just wanted to thank them for going above and beyond, and I think we've got an excellent person. So I thank you for doing that, and I appreciate that recommendation.
You're here, thank you, gentlemen.
I think that's the best way that's been handled since I've been on the commission, and I say that as somebody who was a former chair of the committee, so, thank you.
Thanks very much. Anything else? If not, we do have a request from public. Mr. Jabar Thomas, Mr. Thomas, if you'd like to come forward, just give your name and address.
I'm Jabar Thomas, I stay at 261 West Lars. I just want to come down here and apologize to all y'all for my behavior, you know, the way I was down here acting, you know, sorry, and I just needed someone to talk to, and the new city manager right there, that's a good man, he got a good heart, you know, and we need more people like him that's for the community people, you know, and I just want to say I appreciate, I appreciate you, Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Thomas, thank you very much.
I have a cold, so.
Okay. Careful. Yeah, if you touch the Vice Mayor, you got to go wash your hands. I'm trying to make out this name, I, I think it's, oh, Commissioner Nash, good evening, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm not feeling my best either, Larry, so.
I'll hug you.
Trying to make through it, you know. I would have dressed different, too, but when you don't feel good, you don't want a noose around your neck, so. I'm bringing gifts from the county, more informational support, but I wanted to make sure we got this down. As you know, Nancy Waters, our county clerk, is always on top of her game, very thorough, and she's like a, she's like a, a good mom to everyone up there at the county, so you do what mom tells you to do. Anyway, I'm bringing one of her flyers, as you know, the new Public Defender Office is open, and Mr. Fred Johnson is the director of that department, and he is moving forward, I'm going to pass these down, you can take one if you like, and then you can continue to pass that to your clerk, if you would, more for informational purposes, and you can also get other copies from the county if you need, I'm sure Ms. Waters would oblige you all with those. But what we wanted to do is make sure you got that information, and as you noticed, too, there's some contact info there for those that are looking for expungement support, things of that sort. We want to try to help in those areas so that anyone that can be expunged, we want to help them do that, because we know that is one of the big stifles for people being able to be employed, and as you know, with our community, employment is a big issue in the county, and we need to try to get as many employed as we can to help turn the economic issue around. She also, and we've worked together over the years on voter education, so she sent these flyers, especially encouraging people to be precinct delegates, which are important, especially as you move forward with the political process, so I wanted to pass those out. Those are great informational tools, I know she has a lot more, but she was trying to get them out to everyone, those were her first prints coming to the commissioners, and as you know, we're getting around to all the cities and all the communities, so tonight was my night for the City of Muskegon. But the big return that I have for you today is the new directories for the county. As you know, we usually try to bring these down and present these to you all, so I want to make sure we get copies around to everyone.
I was just going to make sure. Mr. Nash, just to remind everybody, there is a change with the precinct delegates. You used to be able to put in your nominating petition at the local city hall or township hall, but now you have to go to the county clerk, so that is a change from years past.
And now you're pretty much like a candidate, you have to put in the affidavit, and you have to run like a candidate, so it's, it is a little bit different than, than it has been, but yeah, you have to get your information from the county clerk now, and you can't get it from the city, so, and I'm sure our city clerk knows those things, too.
She said, "Say something."
Yeah. I'll tell you what, I had a time of working with them, we put together voter education for them, and those ladies are full of information. It was a wonderful time working with them, and they all kept each other abreast of all these different changes, and it was, it was a great experience, and I wouldn't change it for the world. Did I get enough around to everybody?
No, I'm good. I get one as a companion.
And then we have extras for anybody else that, that needs those. But I also wanted to, you know, congratulate all the new city commissioners for your new positions, I never got a chance to do that, and also wanted to congratulate Mr. Peterson for his new position as city manager, and we're hearing good things, and hopefully with the new leadership at the helm, we'll see some good positive changes coming throughout the city, but those are the things that I wanted to bring down, and if anybody had any questions regarding any of this, if not, like our meetings, we don't like to prolong the show.
Well, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate your afternoon.
It's great to see you.
Feel better?
Yeah, hope you're feeling better.
Are the, are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission? If not, entertain a motion of vacate.
There's nothing else, I motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Then let's get out of here.
Don't run.
Don't run.
Thank you.